All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the County of Los Angeles Citizen Redistricting Commission 15th Regular Public Meeting, followed by the Public Hearing for Communities of Interest Input Zone F. Today is July 28, 2021, and the time is 2:03 PM. We will now call the regular meeting and public hearing to order. As a reminder to the public, this public hearing is being recorded and livestreamed to youtube.com/la-county-redistricting. The link to the recording will also be posted and accessible through the Los Angeles County Redistricting website. If at any time any members of the public has any technical difficulties, please message me, Ty Lee, and we can work towards fixing the issue. If you would like to make a general public comment or a public comment for an agenda item not related to the Communities of Interest public hearing, you may also submit your name to the Q and A, your affiliated organizations, if any, and the agenda item you would like to make a public comment on. As a reminder for members of the public interested in making a public comment, you may submit your name and information to the Google form that will be available in the chat shortly and on the CRC website. You will be asked on the form to describe your communities of interest. When you are called to make your public comment, you will be prompted to unmute your mic so you can speak and you may turn on your video if you are comfortable. If you are participating via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once called upon, press star six to unmute and speak. Each person will have one opportunity to speak for two minutes. The co-chairs reserve the right to limit public comments to one minute per person or extend it to three minutes per person depending on how many would like to speak. When you begin making your comment, please share your name and any affiliation you may have. If you do not wish to speak but would like, would still like to submit a public comment, you may do so by going to the same Google form. Again, you will be able to find the link shortly in the chat or on the CRC website. For members of the public who would like to make a public comment on communities of interest and not a resident of Zone F, you may submit your name and affiliated organization in the Q and A. Your name will be called to make a public comment after members of the public who filled in the Communities of Interest Form for Zone F. In defining communities of interest, this can include, but is not limited to, the economic and social interests that bind your community together. Why your community should be kept together for fair and effective representation, where your community is located, and what nearby areas you would like your areas to be grouped with or not. I will now take the role. As a reminder, commissioner names will be called in a rotating alphabetical order by last name. Missioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. To start, Co-Chair Carolyn Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Present.
Commissioner David Holtzman.
Present.
Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Present.
Co-Chair Daniel Maeda.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Apollonia Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson Obrega.
Present.
Commissioner Priscilla Orbanella Sukura, excuse. Commissioner Haile Soto.
Present.
Commissioner Saida Soto.
Present.
Commissioner Brian Stentcher.
Present.
Commissioner John Bento, excuse. Thank you. I will now turn the agenda over to Co-Chair Williams.
Thank you, Ty. Now we're looking at the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, I'd like to move the action items number five and six to after the public hearings. Okay. So can we now move to public comments? This is for comments on items that are matters that are not on the agenda, not for communities of interest. Are there any public comments today, Ty?
Currently, there are no public comments that are not Communities of Interest related. We can just give a moment, though, and just as a reminder for members of the public, if you are interested in making a public comment for any items not on the agenda and not related to Communities of Interest, you may enter in your name, any affiliated organization you may have, and that you are interested in making a general public comment for the regular meeting in the Q and A. Co-Chair Williams, we currently have no one in queue for that.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we will move to the, the public hearing is now open. And at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Co-Chair Maeda, who will provide an overview of the redistricting process.
Thank you, Co-Chair Williams. Can I ask Ty to go ahead and let folks know again how they can participate in the public hearing portion of the program today by submitting their public comment orally or in writing? We'll let you do that, and then I will start in with the presentation, a brief presentation of the redistricting process.
And members, I'll put more of those slides back up then. Sorry, I've been going back and forth. Go ahead.
So for members of the public interested in making a public comment, you may submit your name and information to the Google form available in the chat and on the CRC website. You will be asked on the form to describe your communities of interest, and when you are called to make your public comment, you will be prompted to unmute your mic so you can speak and you may turn on your video if you are comfortable. If you are participating via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once called upon, press star six to unmute and speak. Each person will have one opportunity to speak for two minutes. Again, the co-chairs reserve the right to limit public comments to one minute per person or to extend it to three minutes per person depending on how many people would like to speak. When you begin making your comment, please share your name and any affiliation you may have. And if you do not wish to speak but would still like to submit a public comment, you may do so by going to the same Google form. Again, you will find the link to the Google form in the chat or on the CRC website. For members of the public who would like to make a public comment on Communities of Interest and not a resident of Zone F, you may submit your name and affiliated organization in the Q and A. Your name will be called to make a public comment after members of the public who filled in the Communities of Interest Form for Zone F. In defining communities of interest, this can include, but is not limited to, the economic and social interests that bind your community together, why your community should be kept together for fair and effective representation, where your community is located, and what nearby areas you would like your areas to be grouped with or not. And just as a reminder on the Google form, one of the last questions to ask if you would like to make a live comment, if you would like to make a live comment during the public hearing, just click yes on that.
Thank you, Ty. So for members of the public interested in making a public comment, please use the link in the chat to fill out the Google form. There you can indicate a written comment, and you can also indicate checkbox indicating you would like to speak orally. Before we take your important public comment, however, we wanted to give you a very brief presentation about the redistricting process, sort of an overview about what we're about here at the commission and what our tasks are and how we could use your help. So the Los Angeles County Citizens Redistricting Commission is the body that is before you now. We want to explain a little bit about who we are and what we are here to do and how you can provide help to us in the redistricting process. If I can go to the first slide. We have a new approach here with the, with LA County Redistricting, next slide. In the past, the LA County Board of Supervisors appointed a committee to study the new census data and to make recommendations for districts to be redrawn. But the supervisors were free to reject the committee's recommendations and to adopt their own map. So it was not an independent process. But now, due to state legislation, there is an independent body, the Los Angeles County Citizens Redistricting Commission, comprised of 14 members of the public who reside in the county, reasonably representative of the county's diversity, who are going to study the new census data and make recommendations based on public data, including the data we gather from you today, to draw new district maps for the county. We are completely independent of the Board of Supervisors. And in fact, we have bylaws which specify that we are not to intentionally have any contact with any of the supervisors, their staffs, their families, or their agents. And so we are truly independent, and we hope to remain that way. Next slide. In conducting our business, we have adopted certain core values that are going to guide our process. Those values include accountability, transparency, objectivity, integrity, and inclusion and equity. And there's a lot more that explains what those, what underlies those values. And you could find this entire slide and the explanation at our website at redistricting.lacounty.gov. That website also has a lot of other information of upcoming public hearings, recordings of past meetings and hearings, and a way to sign up to get emails about all the different activities that we will be engaged in throughout this year, culminating in the drawing of the district maps for the LA County Board of Supervisors. So we certainly encourage you to visit that website, that redistricting.lacounty.gov. Next slide. I want to briefly address the significance and the diversity and the size of LA County and how that affects our process. Next slide. Redistricting happens every 10 years where there's a new census that counts all of the people in the United States. And based on that new data, different bodies are supposed to redraw boundaries of the elected representatives. So the, there is a state CRC, a state Citizens Redistricting Commission, that is looking at the new census data, and they're going to be drawing the boundaries for congressional districts, the federal congressional districts, as well as state assembly districts and state senate districts. There's also a local process where the LA city is drawing boundaries, new boundaries for city council districts. But what we are here today to do is to draw the boundaries or to gather the data to be able to draw the boundaries for the five LA County Board of Supervisors districts to make sure that with the new census data, that those districts are reasonably equal in population and that you will have the opportunity to vote for the supervisor of your choice. Next slide. Redistricting is very important because, among other things, LA County is so large and has so many resources that are brought to bear that affect your everyday life. Each county district has different kinds of county services, including public health services, fire and sheriff's services. And each supervisor controls an awful lot of resources that can affect the residents and improve the lives of the residents in their district. So the choice of supervisor is very important. The sheriff office provides policing services for the unincorporated areas of the county. But also, many incorporated cities contract with the county for fire and police services as well. So that's also something that is going to, the supervisors have some influence over, and that's why the selection of the supervisor is very important. Next slide. Los Angeles County happens to be the most populated county in the United States. About 10 million people reside here. That's a quarter of California's entire population that resides right here in LA County. And that population is greater than that of 41 individual US states. Said another way, only nine United States states have a population greater than that of LA County. We are the third largest metropolitan economy in the world, and we're comprised of 88 cities and over 100 unincorporated territories. Los Angeles City is the second most populated city in the country with about 4 million residents. And as you all know, we are one of the most ethnically diverse counties in the United States. Next slide. This map, this slide shows you the map of the current five supervisory districts. The areas in pink are the unincorporated areas, the areas in white are incorporated individual cities. You can notice right away that District Five, the current District Five, is very, very large as compared to, say, for instance, District Two in the middle of the map. Why is that? Well, District Two is in a very densely populated area, so all of those areas combined is roughly 2 million people, give or take. And District Five, though, is in a much less densely populated area, so it requires a lot more geographic territory to make up the 2 million people or so that will be required to roughly equal the populations of all of the other districts. The map drawing exercise that we have as a commission is to draw five districts. We're not allowed to draw more than five or less than five. That would require approval by the voters. But we do, and we are going to keep in mind that we are trying to solicit your input as to figure out, so we can figure out where those lines should be drawn to create those districts. Next slide. Just a brief overview of the redistricting process, then. When we draw the lines, what are the criteria we're going to be using? So that we have five statutory criteria in order of priority that we're supposed to follow. The first is, as I mentioned, that each district should be reasonably equal in total resident population. Currently, or at the last time they were drawn, they were roughly 2 million people each. The county's population has maybe increased a little bit, but certain areas may have increased more than others. Certain areas may have a higher birth rate, et cetera. So we need to get the new census data to figure out where the lines should be drawn to make sure that whatever the districts we come up with is, are going to be roughly equal to each of the other districts. Second thing is, we need to draw the districts to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. We want to make sure that there's no racial discrimination in terms of the drawing of the districts. Number three, the districts have to be connected to each other. A single district has to be connected to all parts of that district, geographically speaking. Number four, we're trying to maintain the geographic integrity of cities, local neighborhoods, and communities of interest by keeping those things together in the same district where possible. And so one of the tasks we have today is to ask you, what are the communities of interest that you feel you belong to in your particular area? What other neighborhoods, you know, share the same kinds of interests as you do in your, in your area? And if possible, we would like to keep those together. And finally, a fifth, and to the extent it doesn't conflict with one through four, we're trying to keep the districts to be geographically compact. At the same time, as we keep all of those things in mind, all those balls in the air and try to meet all those objectives, we are not to draw the districts to favor or disfavor political incumbents, any particular political candidate or any political party that is not within what we are to do as a commission. Next slide. So at this point, I will turn the mic over to Commissioner Jean Franklin, who will tell you a little bit more about the various criteria we're going to be using, as well as how you can play a part in the redistricting process. Commissioner Franklin?
Okay, thank you, Co-Chair Maeda. And I won't be before you long. Where to draw the lines? US Census counts people every 10 years. Lines are redrawn every 10 years to create five reasonably equally or equal districts of approximately 2 million people each. Next slide, please. It is to give racial and ethnic groups a fair chance. And the Voting Rights Act prohibits discrimination in voting based on race and ethnicity. Giving these groups a fair shot means giving them a chance to elect a candidate of their choice, a candidate that can understand and respond to their needs in their districts. Next slide, please. Here is an example of how redistricting can take away minority voting rights. In this example, this meets at least one criteria. There is equal number of votes in each district. What happens to minority voting rights? Well, they are diluted in this example. There is an equal number of people of color in each district. The question we ask on the Voting Rights Act, is there a way to draw a district that can give minorities a chance to maximize their voting rights? Next slide, please. This example shows how, based on the Voting Rights Act, we may need to draw a district that allows communities of color to elect a candidate of their choice. We still have four districts, each equal in size. What's different about this example? The central district is 75% minorities, or 75% minority voters, and meets redistricting criteria. It's large enough to be a majority minority district. It's geographically compact, politically cohesive, and geographically contiguous. Next slide, please. A key point to point out is, all parts of the district must be geographically connected. In these examples, we see an example of non-contiguous and contiguous. One is not connected geographically. That's the non-contiguous. The second one, which represents an actual district outside of California, is geographically connected. Next slide, please. As we draw the district boundaries, we want to keep together in one district as much as possible cities, local neighborhoods, and communities of interest. This hearing is designed to get input on local communities of interest. And what makes them a community specifically? Communities of interest are geographically connected or contiguous. There are boundaries such as streets, geography, or other things that define their areas, have common social economic interests, which could be financial or cultural or local issues such as pollution or traffic, or it probably could be a lack of access of services such as medical services, senior citizen needs, or perhaps safety or even common language. We need to hear from you so that, as much as possible, we will strive to keep communities of interest in the same district. This helps the elective representatives be responsive to these community concerns and interests. Next slide, please. The key points is to look at shapes of the district, compactness, density, and again, geographically connected. We don't bypass neighbor, nearby populations to draw districts. Next slide, please. Lines drawn to not favor any particular party. That's why, you know, we're not going to draw lines to favor any political party. These three examples show lines drawn that favor parties, green and yellow colors. The first two examples are yellow. A party wins. The yellow party wins. The third example, the green party wins. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
This was another example that was provided to show how the lines could be drawn so they'd be fair in proportion to the electorate. So it's showing that of the 50 precincts, 60% are yellow, 40% are yellow. And there are two options there that preserve that kind of proportion. And then I'll continue it on for you, Commissioner Franklin.
What can you do? What can you do to participate? How can the public participate in redistricting? Well, you can get involved by sign up to stay informed, submit redistricting maps once the census 2020 data are available. LA County is providing free mapping software for the public to use. Also, attend the workshops that you're currently doing and the public hearings. There are 10 Community of Interest public hearings between June and August. We're in July, so we've already completed some before the release of the US Census data. More public hearings to review proposed CRC redistricting plans, options in fall of 2021. Next slide, please. It's important to note, the focus of these are on communities of interest. The 10 zones do not represent new districts. So you can see all of the zones A, B, C, D, and E, and et cetera. Those do not represent districts, but they are merely zip codes only as a way to organize the hearings. You can attend any of these hearings, and you don't have, you know, so you don't have to be in one zone to attend another zone. Next slide, please. Toolkits to spread the word. So the commission has developed a wonderful toolkit for each and every one of you to utilize as part of an outreach so that you can also outreach to your communities, to your various organizations or affiliates. And in these toolkits, there are flyers, there are fact sheets and presentations. Also, we have a Facebook page called Redistricting LA County and a Twitter account at DrawLACounty. So for more information, again, go on redistricting.lacounty.gov. There are 12 county, there are 12 threshold languages in this toolkit, so no one is left out. Armenian, Chinese, Cambodian, Farsi, Korean, and so forth. So all of the 12 threshold languages are incorporated in this toolkit. Next slide, please. Here is a list of your 14 CRC commissioners. And our co-chair are Daniel Maeda, Co-Chair Daniel Maeda, and Co-Chair Carolyn Williams. Next slide, please. And also, here is some information on signing up to stay informed on the redistricting process. There are listening, listen on CRC meetings and public hearings. So everything that you need in order to stay connected and be involved with this redistricting process are available to you. Next slide, please. And the LA County CRC staff consists of our Executive Director, Gayla Hartzell, and also, we also have Ty Lee, who is part of our staff that offers technical support, and also our legal counsel, Holly Watley. That's the end of my presentation, and I'll now give it back over to Co-Chair Maeda. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. Ty, do we, do you have a count of how many folks are queued up to provide public comment?
We have approximately six.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing to public comment on Communities of Interest. We'll recognize every speaker for three minutes.
All right. And before going into that, I do want to remind again, members of the public, if you are interested in making a public comment, please fill out the Communities of Interest form. You'll be able to find the link to the form in the chat or on the website as well. On the form, it would ask, it will ask you if you would like to make a live comment at the public hearing. All you will need to do is indicate yes, and it will show up on our, and the order in which we will take public comments will be as follows. First, individuals in Zone F who complete the Communities of Interest form. Second, individuals who complete the Communities of Interest form from other communities of interest not covered by zip codes in Zone F. Third, individuals who submit their name to the Q and A box on Zoom. And fourth, individuals who call in. As a reminder, also, please be sure that your name on Zoom reflects the name that you submitted on the Communities of Interest form. From there, I'll be able to elevate you so that you'll be able to unmute yourself and share your video. Okay. So the first one we have that is currently in the room is one, I'm sorry, is Jocelyn Perez. Jocelyn Perez, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and share your video if you are comfortable to. Once you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
All right. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Jocelyn. Born and raised in East Los Angeles. Have been living here, on a corporate East Los Angeles, been living here for over 25 years. I was a youth leader and now a community organizer with Inner City Struggle. And so my community can be defined by the streets, Whiter Boulevard, Indiana, and Sisat Chavez. These are important streets that define my community as we often take them to and from work. as we often take them to and from work. You know, some of the places that we go to all the time are the East L.A. Library, Bob's Freeze for some ice cream, the Commerce Center, Badwood Deer Park to play soccer and skateboard. Just to share, like, my dad and uncles and cousins, we had a family soccer team and we would play in the park on community tournaments at Badwood Deer Park all the time. And it's also one of the only safe places to skate on the east side. And so just to describe my community a little bit more, we are a community of working class renters who have been heavily impacted by COVID. Our shared interests include protecting our small businesses, ensuring our community's education and well-being. A lot of us attended Garfield High School and Torres High School within L.A. USC, where we, you know, we have like pre-reduced lunches, lunch programs, and so forth. As a community, we find family, community, and education very important. We look out for one another and support one another. And just to share, had the opportunity to help distribute economic aid this past year. And after I made a few phone calls, I actually started receiving more phone calls from folks wanting to hear about the program because neighbors had shared of this resource and let them know that we were doing that. So this sense of community is really shared with other areas like commerce and city terrorists. And so we would consider them to be with us. We don't wish to be put with Monterey Park as we have different communities of interest and just geographically different. Language and culture brings us together and so does our demand for quality education. East Los Angeles has come together to demand equitable funding for education and unjust evictions. And so we will continue to advocate for ourselves and we hope that we're able to stay together under a single district. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Matia Maviz. Matia, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you're comfortable, share your video. Once you begin making your public comment, you will be, you will be given three minutes to make a public comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matia Malvays and I am a member of a Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, TRULA. I'm the People Block. I am a resident of the city of Whittier, California, and I've lived in my community for fifteen years. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of my community in South Whittier, which is made up of Latino that speak Spanish. Most of us are immigrants and children of immigrants. The majority of people in my community are working class people. The type of work available for my community members are domestic workers, essential workers such as restaurant workers, retail grocery store employees, bartenders, and servers. Additionally, there are a lot of street vendors such as people selling flowers, frutas, and heloteros. Most of my neighbors live in apartments, rentals, and small, single-family homes. It is normal that one of a family takes a bedroom and another one takes the living room in order to afford their housing cost. The resources available to my community services are a couple of libraries. For example, in the South Whittier Library, they offer citizenship classes. They also offer GED or high school diploma courses for students who don't have access to technology. They let them borrow laptops for free. We also have Plaza de la Raza, which is a county-funded program that have childcare available for low-income families. In this community location, they offer information such as access to food pantries. Also, we have some parks for the parents and children to use such as sports, dance classes for free of charge for the local communities. Additionally, we have access to food pantry, which are provided throughout the area at local high schools such as Pioneer High School. The largest employers in my city in Whittier are bars and restaurants such as Calaveras or Tacos de Vichy's and the biggest one, which is Whittier Brewery. What makes my neighborhood unique are celebrations such as Christmas parades, which happen every year in uptown Whittier. Different schools in the area, along with the police department and fire department, also participate. This parade usually draws big crowds. For educational purposes, the higher education institutions in my community are Whittier College, Rioondo. However, a lot of students attend Rioondo because it is the most affordable institution. My community is located between the streets of Telegraph Road and Florence Avenue near California High School. Whittier is in the middle of five, the six oh five, the sixty, and the fifty-seven freeways. It usually takes ten to fifteen minutes to drive to the freeway entrance for any of them. To move around my community, I can use the bus known as the Sunshine Shuttle. But if you're trying to commute to downtown L.A., use one of the bus lines known as the MLV fifty-seven, which will connect you to the metro bus and station. My community is similar to cities of Pico Rivera down in Norwalk and it's completely different from the neighborhoods of La Mirada, La Habra, and Roland Heights.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Juan Carlos Hernandez. So Juan, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you're comfortable, please share your video. Once you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Juan Carlos and I live in East Los Angeles. And so I'm a student at East Los Angeles College and a member of Inner City Struggle. And during my free time, I love going to El Mercadito and seeing all the people there hustling and really just getting to support local business by purchasing my favorite foods and aguas frescas. Places like Indiana Station have served as an area of rest for me as I wait for my train to go to school or as a last stop after a long day. And so I do have a lot of appreciation for transitory spaces like this, especially built for working class people that don't have access to cars. And so places like Whittier Boulevard, East Los Angeles Civic Center, and St. Isabel Church similarly occupy a warm place in my heart. From Folsom Street to Whittier Boulevard and from Indiana Street to Gerhardt Avenue, this is where I feel I am at home. This is home. And so we are an undocumented community and when we come together to celebrate our culture, that is how we celebrate our home. We are working class people who live paycheck to paycheck, ensuring that there is food on the table. We believe in improving our community and seeking elevation in our families through education and hard work. We have advocated for more resources to come back into our schools and our communities, and we have also demanded renter protections, something incredibly monumental for East Los Angeles. We hold this to be very valuable and believe that city terrorists and commerce share the same values and same interests. Meanwhile, areas like Monterey Park and Montebello have created their own communities, which are geographically separate from us. For years, my community has been pushing for better living conditions and an opportunity for future generations to receive a quality education. As the years progress, we get a step closer to it because we were able to come together and advocate for our most common of interests. And to end, I just want to say that hardship and the endurance of these same hardships is what joins us all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Panduro. Jessica, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you are comfortable, please share your video. Once you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
Hello. Hi, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Panduro. I am a community organizer with Inner City Struggle and I live in the city of L.A. During the past ten years, I have been going door to door to communities like East L.A., commerce, city terrorists. And door after door, I hear many similar stories. Community members mentioning how housing is one of their main priorities because it has become really hard to make each month rent. My community is an extremely hard-working class where sometimes paycheck is not enough. During the last sixteen months, our communities were the essential workers with very low pay and no protection. And the reason that I mention this is because we were the most impacted. We saw a lot of our communities struggle and face a lot of COVID, COVID issues. So we also saw our young folks taking after-school jobs to help support their families in making ends meet. And even like this, a lot of families in East L.A. owe months in rent. We are an immigrant community with a lot of language barriers and we have a technology gap. Through adversity, we have come together to demand and ensure that we establish renters protections, demand for resources to come into families with high needs and are currently fighting to stay in our homes. We also demand for quality education. So we have gone to L.A. Borof Supervisors to L.A. USC to ensure that we continue to fight for our community's needs. So from Bandini Drive to City Terrace Drive, from Indiana to Garfield, I have walked and talked to many of my neighbors to hear what are some of the issues that are impacting them. I am part of the community, a community that has been in the shadows. Even myself, right before Inner City Struggle, I was unaware of a lot of these decisions that were being made for me. And today, I'm here representing myself and many of those folks who are out there working unaware of what's happening. East L.A., commerce, and city terrorists, we share a lot of common interests, a lot of issues that we are working together to ensure that we have someone who represents us, who are advocating for all these issues. We understand Montebello and Monterey. They also have their issues, but they're currently very different to ours. They are a more established community and we are still fighting to ensure that we protect a lot of families to stay in their homes. So with that being said, I really could ask you all to keep East L.A. together and communities of interest to ensure that we have true representation of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Masis Hagovian. Masis, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you're comfortable, you may share your video. Once you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Masis Hagovian and I'm the Intergovernmental Relations Analyst for the city of Santa Creta. On behalf of the Santa Creta City Council, I respectfully urge that the city of Santa Creta and Santa Creta Valley be placed within only one supervisory district and moreover, that the city and the Santa Creta Valley be placed within a compact district which would encompass contiguous communities of North Los Angeles County, including the Anlo Valley and Northwest communities of the San Fernando Valley. City of Santa Creta collaborates on regional issues, including transportation planning, homelessness, public safety, emergency preparedness and response, and water quality and supply with surrounding unincorporated areas directly adjacent to the city, including Castaic, Stevenson Ranch, Acton, and Aguadolce and the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale. Furthermore, the city of Santa Creta serves on the North Los Angeles County Transportation Coalition with the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale to develop regional policies and implement projects and programs to address critical transportation issues, promote economic development, and maximize transportation funding opportunities, including Measure M and Senate Bill One in the North Los Angeles County region. Additionally, similar to the city of Santa Creta, the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and Fire Department and work together on emergency preparedness through the Los Angeles County Disaster Management Area B Planning Group, which is of critical importance due to the region's history of wildfires and flooding. Finally, the city of Santa Creta serves on the Santa Clara River Watershed Area Steering Committee with other regional bodies and surrounding communities, including the Aguadolce Town Council and Santa Creta Valley Water Agency to develop funding plans and recommendations to provide water quality and supply and community enhancement benefits to the Santa Creta Valley region. Regional collaboration between these unincorporated areas and cities meet the commission's criteria with respect to supervisory districts preserving geographic integrity and retaining communities of interest that share common social and economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Thank you for your consideration of my comments. And we also submitted a letter from our city council as well and we're hoping that that could be included as part of written comment either at today's hearing or a future hearing for the Anlo Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Co-chairs, we currently have no other members of the public in queue to make a public comment.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do, if there's no objection, is to suspend the public hearing, go to the regular business of the commission, complete that, and then return to see if anyone has entered the, you know, entered the Zoom and would like then to make a public hearing rather than simply to stop the public hearing at this time. Are there any objections to that, that plan? Okay. And this would also, I think, be consistent with the comments we've received from the public interest groups that they would like us to hold open the public hearing for a longer period of time rather than just at the beginning. So let's do that and go to, yes.
I'm sorry. We did have another sign up, but the name, I didn't, the name was mismatched on the Zoom.
Let's go to them then. Yes.
May co-chair Maeda, while this person's being called up, maybe we should just announce because there may be individuals who would like to attend the Spanish-speaking public hearing on August seventh at ten a.m. It would be the very same link you used today and we'll be talking about it later in the business meeting as well. So that might be important before people might sign off so they can help spread the word and let others know. So it's Saturday, August seventh, ten a.m., same link as you signed on for today.
Excellent. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Dosia Martinez. So Dosia, momentarily, you'll be able to unmute yourself and if you're comfortable, please share your video. Once you begin speaking, you will have three minutes to make your public comment.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Dosia Martinez. I am a student at Esteban Torres High School and I live in East Los Angeles. I'm a member of Inner City Struggle. Most of my free time I spend with my family roaming around East L.A. from visiting Salazar Park down the street to visiting the delicious food trucks in Whittier Boulevard. I feel most at home from Flores Street to Telegraph and from Indiana to Garfield. When I visit East Los Market and get greeted with an Hola mija, there is a lot of cultura in East L.A. that I want to ensure that we continue to cherish and preserve. Most of my community members are construction workers, mechanics, street vendors, gardeners, and domestic house workers. They are renters and are primarily Spanish speakers. During the past sixty months, our communities were facing eviction, displacement, all due to the economic hardships they faced because of COVID- nineteen. We push our immigration reforms and resources that trickle down to our schools and communities. My community is the working class who lives paycheck by paycheck. I've lived in city terrorists before and I can say that we share a lot of common interests where East L.A. and city terrorists feel the same as well as commerce. Monterey Park and Montebello, even though we are very close to each other, we don't share the common interest. We face housing insecurities and have been fighting displacement and gentrification for a long time. My community is resilient. We are fighting through what COVID- nineteen pandemic has left us with. We are a community that looks out for each other where folks share information around resources with one another. From rent relief programs to food banks and COVID vaccines information, we have joined together to demand for more money to come into our schools and also to advocate for rent protection. We are East L.A. and here everyone knows each other. You meet a stranger in the street and you will know someone in common. We are all connected. Keep our communities together.
Thank you. Currently, we have no other in queue at the moment.
Okay. Let's go ahead and suspend the public hearing portion momentarily. Go to the regular business of the commission and then return to see if anybody has appeared who wants to participate in the public hearing portion. See, Gaylor's putting up our slides for this portion. Okay, so the first item to deal with are- to deal with are the consent items, not the content items. Uh, approval of minutes and um I think we have two draft minutes to approve and I think we should take them separately. Uh, first is the draft minutes for July fourteenth, twenty twenty one's meeting. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Holtzman.
Um, I was just, I would like to move adoption of the consent calendar both together, but if you prefer taking them separately, that's fine.
Uh, and I appreciate uh the effort at efficiency. I think that in the past, uh, we've uh had them separate only because some commissioners uh would prefer to abstain when they were not able to attend a particular meeting. Uh, and that, that's why we've, we've taken them separately.
Okay, maybe agenda some separately in the future.
Okay, I mean, it's five A and five B. Uh, I think that's separate enough to to make it clear what we're doing. Um, so uh, any comments on the July fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty one draft uh minutes? If there are no comments, questions, uh additions, corrections, then entertain a motion to have those uh particular minutes uh voted for approval. Commissioner Stetcher makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Harley Soto, seconds. Uh, Ty, can you take a roll on that, please?
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. I will now take roll call. Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Mendoza.
Who for approval?
Commissioner Apolonia Morales.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Priscilla Orpanella Sukura, excused. Commissioner Haile Soto.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Siders Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
Yes.
Commissioner John Vento, excused. Co-chair Carolyn Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now the uh uh minutes of the hearing of July twentieth, twenty twenty one. Any comments, corrections, questions, revisions to those minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to have the July twentieth, twenty twenty one public hearing minutes approved.
So, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Commissioner Holtzman, I'll second it.
I'll move.
Commissioner Holtzman moves and Commissioner Wong seconds the motion to approve the July twenty 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 one minutes. Uh, Ty, why don't you take a roll on that, please?
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. I will now take roll call. Commissioner Jean Franklin.
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Abstain.
Commissioner Apolonia Morales.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpanella Sukura, excuse. Commissioner Haile Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Siders Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner John Vento, excuse. Co-chair Carolyn Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorina Wong.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, next uh agenda item, six A, Co-chair Williams.
Thank you, Co-chair Maeda. Uh, this item, we're considering authorizing Arc Bridge to subcontract with Bruce Edelson and Dr. Jonathan Katz to conduct the racially polarized voting in L A County and rescission of prior direction to issue a revised RFP for voter polarization analysis. I'd like to ask um Commissioner Stetcher, who is the colleague for the demarcography working group, to provide an overview of the process that took place, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Co-chair Williams. Uh, I'll briefly go through the steps that we uh took in the working group to identify uh these subject matter experts. We developed a task order that described the questions that we wanted the racially polarized voting uh consultant to answer. And then the executive director, uh, Gaila Hartshaw, reached out to twenty-three different subject matter experts in universities and to consultants who had done this kind of analyses in the past, including providing expert testimony on redistricting cases. Uh, and she, who she contacted directly and asked if they would be interested in um in submitting a proposal, summary of their qualifications, or referring her to someone else who might be appropriately skilled. In the end, we sent the task order to six prospective subject matter experts who met these qualifications and said they uh would be interested and five of the six submitted descriptions to us uh telling us how they would approach the topic, what their qualifications were and names of people we could contact to uh confirm their past performance. The working group read all of the proposals and we received input from Arc Bridge. Uh, and uh, we agreed that in fact, all five of the individuals or pairs of individuals who um submitted their uh descriptive materials were qualified to do the work. It was an, an excellent set of qualified people. And the uh working group writ large identified three who seemed particularly strong. And Commissioner Vento and I interviewed uh each of these three uh experts or expert teams. And after those interviews, John and I agreed that the team of Bruce Edelson and Jonathan Katz would be the best experts to engage for our purposes for a number of reasons, including um the fact that they have extensive, directly relevant expertise uh with independent redistricting commissions in Arizona, the Department of Justice and other clients. That they have, they will bring both uh legal and analytic expertise relating to racially polarized voting. That one of the team lives here in Los Angeles County and is easily accessible to the commission. They're enthusiastic about doing the work and their price is reasonable uh given the range of prices that we saw among the five prospective um experts.
Thank you, Commissioner Stetcher, um for that overview and also want to thank the uh working group for the amount of work that they put in, reading all of the um the RFPs that were received, um looking at identifying the most qualified and for you and Commissioner Vento for actually conducting interviews. At this time, we're open for clarifying questions from the commission. Are there any, again, clarifying questions? I'm gonna ask, I don't see any hands raised, Ty, or there any hands raised? I see one, okay.
Uh, no, no longer a hand.
Okay, so if not.
Oh, we're, uh, we have Commissioner Siders Soto, who has her hand up.
Okay.
Commissioner Siders Soto.
Apologies if I missed it, but were the um, the, the uh proposals they submitted shared?
Uh, they were shared among the members of the working group and Arc Bridge. Uh, I do not believe they were sent to all fourteen commissioners.
And I, and I think because it seems that in this process, we might not hear from them as we did with the, from the previous group, but at least it would be helpful for me to um to see your recommendations, to see the, the materials or the proposals from the, the top uh or the top two.
I have no objection to uh sharing them. There were three who we interviewed and if you like, I can direct uh the executive director or Ty to share those with you.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Are there other questions? If not, we will open it for public comments on this action item. Ty, do we have any comments?
Oh, we currently do not have any public comments on this agenda item.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, at this time, if there are no more clarifying uh questions, um, no, are there any comments, remaining comments, or are we open for, ready for a motion?
Uh, I, I see a question there.
Commissioner Wong.
Uh, yes, um, I was going to make a motion, but, but actually I wanted to ask Commissioner um Sarah Soto if you would like to review the proposals before we made a decision. Um, so at any rate, I just wanted to ask what you might, what your preference might be.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I, I mean, I think, I think uh I would feel more comfortable voting after having reviewed the material again because we had an opportunity to hear from the previous um uh company or organization who was, who had bid. I, I think it, it feels right to go through that as well. With the top recommendation, uh, just to make sure that I'm making, at least for me, that I'm making a decision based on what I have, what's been presented or what's in front of me.
So, so for you, you, you would be more comfortable, if we have a motion, you wouldn't be more comfortable being able to review the proposals, the top three, before voting on it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, or at the very least, the top, the one that's being recommended today.
Okay.
What's your Maeda?
Uh, yes, can I ask um the working group uh and, and lead, Commissioner Stetcher, uh, what about the timing uh of this? What are the uh consequences if we do not uh proceed with uh making this uh vote today?
There's a small possibility that some of the experts will have other engagements that uh we might lose our top choice, but I, I can't quantify that. Um, we are on a short timeframe, hoping to get their work done and fed back to us uh before we reach the point of map drawing so that we're aware of the implications of the, any identified uh racially polarized voting and and so a delay, uh particularly a delay of two weeks, like, uh, would really uh set us back. Uh, I don't want to steamroll this choice. But uh, it does seem that based on our, our previous efforts, the review that we have done was kind of consistent with what was done uh previously. Uh, nevertheless, the big problem in delaying would be shortening the timeline, timeframe that we give to the subject matter experts to carry out their analysis and report back to us.
And can I also make a comment, uh, as well as that the working, we, one of the reasons we created the working groups is so that they would be able to do this kind of background work on behalf of the commission and make recommendations on us and that we would trust their recommendations. This does not say that um Commissioner Soto has a, a valid request, but I think one of the reasons were, it was a sense of urgency that we moved forward on this and I know as sitting us, um, sitting with the, the working group, they did a lot of due diligence and um looking at the, reviewing the proposals and having a discussion among themselves about who were the best qualified candidates. Uh, I see Commissioner Kenny's hand is up.
Yes, may I ask Commissioner Stetcher, how many people were in his working group? And whether all the members of the working group read the submissions?
There were five uh commissioners who were part of the working group. In addition to Commissioner Vento and myself, that included uh Commissioner Holtzman, Commissioner uh Obregon, and Commissioner Wong. And all five of us read all five of the uh submissions and judged them all to be qualified and identified the top three. But I would welcome comments from any of the other uh commissioners. We also got feedback from Arc Bridge regarding the uh qualifications of the uh five submissees.
I see um Commissioner Holtzman and Commissioner Franklin. I'm not sure who was first.
Uh, I believe it was Commissioner Franklin, the Commissioner Holtzman.
Thank you.
Yes, I um prefer not prolonging it because of the urgency and the benefit of having a working group uh is to do the heavy lifting and uh doing all the research and uh speaking with all of the proposers. Uh, plus, they did interview them as well. So I really, I, I'm so excited that we do have recommendations finally. And I really don't want to further this process any further because we have a strong working group. And so I concur with their recommendations.
Commissioner Holtzman.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I, I move that if it is within our authority, uh, we direct Arc Bridge to subcontract with Bruce Adelson Esquire and Dr. Jonathan Katz to conduct an analysis of racially polarized voting in Los Angeles County as outlined in our recent task order.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Are any questions?
What's your Maeda?
Uh, yes, I would like to ask Commissioner Holtzman if he would uh uh agree to a friendly amendment to expand that motion, uh, not only to authorize Arc Bridge to some subcontract with the working group's recommended uh group uh or uh subject matter experts, Bruce Edelson and Dr. Jonathan Katz, to conduct the RPV analysis in Los Angeles County, but also uh that the commission would rescind the prior direction to staff to issue a revised RFP for voter polarization analysis.
Um, just like you wanted to do, the two items on the consent calendar separately. I think that last piece we, we should handle separately. Do the uh do the subcontracting in one motion and the rescission in another.
It's, um, so we have, so the motion, you're saying the motion is not amended?
No.
Um. Holly, I'm gonna ask if we have, do we separate them? I'm not sure where we go with this.
Uh, we can. I mean, um, yes, you should deal with a motion that's on the floor and then a second motion can be made. Or that could be done in one, but the motion on the floor is just the first part.
So, um, we have a, um, we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. And uh, so I guess, oh, we don't have any, do we have any additional questions on this, comments? Okay, can we take a roll call vote?
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. I will now take roll call. Commissioner David Holtzman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mary Kenny.
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza.
Who for approval?
Commissioner Apolonia Morales.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obregon.
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpanella Sukura, excuse. Commissioner Haile Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Siders Soto.
Abstain.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher.
With respect to Commissioner Soto, yes.
Uh, Commissioner John Vento, excuse. Commissioner John Bento, excuse. Co-chair Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorina Wong?
Abstaining with respect to Commissioner Soto.
Commissioner Jean Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So that motion is approved. I think we had an amendment. Do we have another motion for this particular action item?
Commissioner Holtzman and co-chair Maeda?
Okay, now I move, we rescind our prior directions to staff to issue a revised RFP for voter polarization analysis.
Second.
Are there questions or comments on this motion?
Question?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Wong, I didn't know if she had her, okay, I'm sorry, hand up. Can, just for my edification, can you explain again real quickly what we're doing here?
I, I can give it a shot. Gail, can you clarify this?
Essentially, the text on the, on the screen, Commissioner Mendoza, has been split into two motions. You have had a motion, it's been seconded, and you have voted on the approval to subcontract, Arc Bridge to subcontract with Bruce Edelson and Dr. Katz to do the RPV for you. The second half is what the current motion is to rescind. If you remember back in May, there was a motion when there was a presentation, you weren't happy, you wanted to see what other experts were out there that could do this work. And you asked for us to reissue the RFP for what was then called the voter polarization analysis. This current mission asks you to rescind that. And because it's no longer needed since you're going to go with these other two. Does that help explain it, or do you need further amplification?
It does. I guess I was wondering, I don't know if it's appropriate to even discuss, but if it has anything to do with pending litigation.
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this motion to rescind the prior direction to issue a revised RFP for voter polarization analysis? Okay, if not, Ty, can we do roll call?
Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. I will now take roll call. Commissioner Mary Kenny?
Yes.
Co-chair Daniel Maeda?
All right.
Commissioner Mark Mendoza?
Approve.
Commissioner Apolonia Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson Obergard?
Yes.
Commissioner Priscilla Orpinala Segura, excuse. Commissioner Haile Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Sider Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Brian Stetcher?
Yes.
Commissioner John Bento, excuse. Co-chair Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorina Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean Franklin?
Yes.
Commissioner David Holtzman?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank the demography working group for all this work and moving us ahead in this process. Now we'll move to the next, next action item.
Commissioner Stetcher has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just briefly, I wanted to make sure someone would forward the proposal to Commissioner Soto so that she would be able to review it or the top three.
We'll post the top proposal that's been selected on the website as part of this meeting's decision. So it'd be available for the public and the commissioners as well. And then I can also email it out to the commissioners as well.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
And thank you for your concern, Commissioner Soto, as well. We appreciate that. Okay, the next future agenda items, there are no future agenda items requested at this time, so we'll move to the next action item.
So this is the executive report. So the, oh, Commissioner Stetcher. No, okay. This is the executive report. I just wanted to give you an update because we have some new developments. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about our Spanish-speaking public hearing, which will be next Saturday, August 7th at 10:00 a.m. So you, as commissioners, understand the logistics as well as the public who are attending today to help spread the word. We, in August, will be moving into a hybrid model. You're going to see that we will be doing one in El Monte on August 11th at 7:00 p.m. We'll be doing another one at West Los Angeles College. That is no longer tentative. We have gotten that approved. That will be on Thursday, August 19th at 7:00 p.m. And then Antelope Valley College on Sunday, August 22nd at 2:00 p.m. have also offered their facilities for providing a hybrid approach. And we talk about a hybrid. I'm going to get into some more details. It's a combination of commissioners attending both in person or virtually, and I'll get into more of those details. And also it gives the opportunity for the public to attend and to speak either in person or virtually. Let me first talk about the Spanish one because this may be of particular interest to some of our attendees. There was some confusion among the commissioners. You all need to attend. It is important not only for the, for the quorum, but for you to hear from the public. We will be providing two interpreters, an English-to-Spanish interpreter for the commissioners and the public who are English-speaking only. We will also be providing a Spanish-to-English interpreter in the event that English-speaking commissioners or the public have a question, so it too can be translated or interpreted for the entire attendees. Carlos De Alba will be working with Ty Beale, so he can cover roll call and other business logistics initially indirectly in Spanish for the Spanish-speaking population. So, any questions on that format? This is an experiment. It's not been done, to my knowledge, by other commissions before, but I think it's an important part of our outreach to communicate directly with this population. We will also have four of our commissioners who are native Spanish speakers who will be doing the presentation that you've heard before every single public hearing. Commissioner Stetcher, I see your hand is raised.
This is a, maybe a trivial misunderstanding, but I thought you said the Spanish-to-English translator would be available to help non-Spanish speakers ask questions. Is it going to be, in fact, a simultaneous translation from the Spanish to English for those of us who want to follow the remarks and are not quite fluent?
Right. So at the public hearing, we're going to give instructions to everyone. But the way the webinar works is you will call in, there will be directions at the bottom of your webinar screen for you to get the connection for the simultaneous instruction on your cellphone. The volume will be about 80% in the English-translated version, but you'll still have 20%, so you can hear the conversation in Spanish in the background. So you're going to be experiencing what Spanish-speaking people normally experience when they call in and have the English-to-Spanish translation. You're going to have the reverse experience. Any other questions about the logistics? As I said, it's an experiment. Commissioner Soto?
I'm wondering if it makes sense to consider, sorry, that's my dog, to consider extending the, the time allotted to each speaker? Because I, I know that translation is difficult. And so if we give them more time, they'll be able to slow down enough for the translation to just be better quality as a whole.
I'll defer to the co-chair. Go ahead.
Let me just jump in. When the public commenter requires a simultaneous interpretation, so let's say they come and they're speaking in Spanish and they've asked for, and we've arranged for a simultaneous interpretation, they get doubly allotted time. So today, if somebody showed up, they would get six minutes. So they, they're not penalized for the fact that they've got to pause while the interpreter catches up and so on. So legally, that's what we would do in that situation. And we can, as Gail had talked about, you know, defer to the co-chairs about the opposite. I mean, normally, if, if there's not an interpreter, we would not have extra time, but that, that doesn't mean that the co-chairs couldn't decide, for whatever reason, to allow it.
That's great. Thank you, Holly.
Any other questions on this? And obviously, we're going to walk you through this process as we do it. And we also had pointed out, if it goes well, it may be a model we want to try again in November when you're receiving options from the population as well regarding the maps you've drawn. I wanted to also sort of, just sort of give some highlights. In August, we're going to be rolling out and we'll be sharing with you more information about the training program for mapping software and how we're going to be providing the training, not only for the commissioners, but for the public and the various databases that will be added. The other thing that we started looking at was a calendar for September. And it turns out Wednesday, September 8th, also happens to be Rosh Hashanah. So I'd like to propose we cancel that meeting. I've contacted Patriotic Hall to see if we could reschedule it either for September 9th or September 14th, because that could be a long period to go. Commissioner Holtzman, I see your hand is up.
Oh, yeah, that's the second day of Rosh Hashanah, which ends at sundown. I just looked at my handy app. Sundown will be on that day at 7:09 here in Burbank. I imagine all of the county will be past sunset if we just postpone the start to 7:30. Of course, some people might not want to travel to get there while it's still a holiday. So maybe if we started it at eight, we could still do it that day. If, and only if really there's problems with rescheduling at Patriotic Hall. I just wanted to point that out. I'm not totally all super well-versed in the rules, the Jewish rules that apply to the holiday, but I do know that it ends around sundown.
I also know there's a tradition. Oftentimes, people want to spend that evening with their families. So if the commission is comfortable and I can get these alternative dates, does this make sense to the rest of you? Okay, I'll keep working on this. We can use September 8th as our third choice if we cannot get the 9th or the 14th. And we would then start it later. But I do want to show respect for Rosh Hashanah, for the various members of the community. Any other questions on that? Yes, Commissioner, Co-chair Williams?
It's not a question. The, the September the 9th is actually the, I think that's the second, it's the second Thursday. So it's actually in, in, I think it's Thursday of September.
Mayor, okay.
It's a little.
September 9th or September 14th. So our first choice, September 9th, September 14th or September 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I only say that because we'd normally be meeting the second week of September, so depending on where we move it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. The other thing you all requested, since we will be having three hybrid meetings in August, that there would be two Super Sozial Districts, SD 3 and SD 4, that would not have had a hybrid. So in looking at dates where we could get the best turnout for quorum, the best dates for doing those would be Wednesday, September 22nd and Wednesday, September 29th at 7:00 p.m. Based on your feedback when we had our last meeting, I also was very sensitive to the suggestion of Commissioner Sider Soto that we look at geographic areas where there might be digital technology divide issues so that individuals whose best means of giving public input would be in person. So this is what I have come up with. I have gotten information from the LA County Public Library, and the one I got confirmed yesterday is actually in San Fernando City, and it would be in SD 3. It's near Pacoima, Panorama City, heavily Spanish-speaking area. And we, as of now, can get the, the meeting room in the public library on September 22nd from 7 to 9. When we have in-person meetings, we can actually set not only a start time, but an end time. And this is the time block that they have given us. They also gave us the caution that it depends upon public health guidance, which of course we'll monitor. They only have room for 20 people to be there in person, given current restrictions the county has imposed. We have that one right now slated. The other location would be one, another LA County Public Library, and that would be either in Bellflower or Lakewood, and that would be north of Long Beach. Again, it's only tentative at this point, but it would be for September 29th. The public libraries are beginning to open up to the public. They have not opened their meeting rooms yet. So this is a special favor they're doing for us. But collectively, if you look at the ones scheduled in black, those are in August. The ones in red would be scheduled in September, and that would cover all five Super Sozial Districts. Any questions on that? Commissioner, Co-chair Maeda?
So to clarify, these are hybrid, meaning some folks will be in person and some folks will be attending virtually. And one of the issues is, in some of these instances, as an example, if we do the one in San Fernando Public Library, 20 people in person, that means if all the commissioners are there in person, that's relatively few number of open slots for the public. So for that one, and maybe for some of the other ones, West LA College perhaps, it actually is better if there's a relatively small showing of in-person commissioners for those public hearings and most folks coming hybrid. Is that right?
That's correct. And I was going to sort of go through those details a little next. West LA College, I'm doing a site visit. I'll be doing a field trip. If anyone wants to join me from the commission, let me know. They're, they want to know our protocol in terms of covering masks and how we're going to handle the number of people who could be present. So a suggestion that Holly Watley actually came up with on these is that maybe we have staff and a very limited number of commissioners, like maybe the two co-chairs and maybe the commissioners who are from that area who know the community's show face. And that the rest of you could attend virtually. When I did the survey, a number of you would prefer to attend virtually. Some of you were concerned also about COVID-19. So this gives you the ability to count towards quorum and be there in person or virtually. I'll know better about West LA College. I think El Monte is prepared. Again, we should look at the stage space because we have to have six feet apart for each of the commissioners. Commissioner Franklin, then Commissioner Wong?
Yes, I have a question concerning attending virtually. It was my understanding that if we attended virtually, we need to be, or we need to make sure that our address is posted in case people wanted to come.
Okay, so point of clarification. Through September 30th, we are under the governor's executive order. And you attending virtually counts for quorum. If we do the hybrid, you can attend virtually or in person. After October 1st, if the governor does not extend the executive order, then Holly Watley can go into more of the details, but you would have to post if you're meeting somewhere else, like a Starbucks or near your home.
Okay, thank you.
But this is one advantage of doing this also prior to October 1st because we do know the ground rules at this point, other than whatever else public health may issue in terms of requirements. Commissioner Wong, was your hand raised?
Yes, it was, but it was Commissioner Franklin's question about if we were allowed before, in order to make quorum, we had to be in person. But you clarified it, so now it, we don't, for all the September, well, for all the rest of the meetings, we can do it virtually and that counts as a quorum. So that's, that's, that's important. Thank you for that clarification.
It's exactly, exactly correct. And to Co-chair Maeda's point, in San Fernando City, it may make sense only three or four of us attend, or five, so that we can allow 15 members of the public to be there. We may have to have them form a line outside if we have more. We have to put in procedures to make sure they're masked, for example, and that kind of thing. So we may have to look at some way to handle that kind of queuing. Any other questions on this? And, you know, when I did this survey, you know, about half of you indicated greater comfort to attend virtually. So we're being sensitive to that as well. So we've covered most of the points on this slide. When you do attend, we're going to follow whatever the current protocols are. Right now, masks are required. Social distancing is required. LA County wanted me to let you know that their facilities are not yet open to the public. The Board of Supervisors and other commissions are not meeting in person. So you all are doing something that is outside of the standard operating practices of LA County.
If I may, you, you just said social distancing is required, but your slide. If I may, you, you just said social distancing is required, but your slide says social distancing not required. Which is it?
It is required. I'm sorry. It has been suspended as of last week. You're correct. Through September, the commissioners can attend either virtually, which we've already gone over, or in person and will count towards Quorum. And we will get back to you on each of these sites about what we think will be the maximum number of commissioners to attend. If you are passionate about attending a particular one of these, I would suggest you just email me directly so we can give you priority preference. Any other questions on that? Okay. Oh, wait, two participants had raised their hands.
We have Commissioner Holtzman, then Commissioner Wong.
Okay.
So I remember when we were applying, there was something about travel reimbursement for us going to, you know, meetings in the field or wherever. What's the status of setting that up?
Actually, I put in the request. Let me check with the program manager assigned from the county to see if we can get reimbursed for that. But I did put in an expense item for that. So I'll get back to you on that. Commissioner Wong?
Yes, and we, I know that we probably should know this, but would you mind just letting us know when the hearing is within our district so we know which one we have to attend in person for? That would be helpful.
Um, do you know what Superstoral District you're in now?
Yeah, I'm in 3.
Well, then you are going to be September 22nd at 7:00.
Oh, okay.
City. I mean, I think everybody knows what Superstoral District or area you live in, correct? Is this clear enough? Commissioner, I, I know the map can be confusing, but the general area there you'll see is 3. Commissioner Holtzman, again?
Just to clarify, I believe there's no obligation to attend the hearing in the district you happen to live in.
Right.
If you can count as part of the Quorum and attend virtually and want to do that, there's no, there's no obligation to attend the meeting for your particular district, right?
There is no need whatsoever. I do know the California CRC, they tend to make sure that they have somebody from within the geographic area and someone from the outside, in fact, to make sure it has an objective check and balance. So it really is your choice. So just let me know if there's one you want to attend. We'll see what we could do to make that happen, but there's no obligation. Anything else? I just wanted to make a reminder, and then we should see if there are any other members of the public who want to speak, that there will be no regular meeting tonight at 7:00 PM. That was the meeting we're having today. And I'll post this again at 7:00 tonight, just in case anybody calls in. So I'll turn it over to the co-chairs and Ty, if we have any other public comments. Oh, Commissioner Stetcher has a question.
This is not a request for a specific agenda item, but I would like at some point to talk about how we will be able to process the COI evidence that we've been collecting. I know this is something that Commissioner Holtzman's been interested in as well. Ideally, I would like someone to take the words, draw them on a map, and make that easily available to us so we can see visually the communities that have been identified as being similar and the ones that have been identified as being dissimilar. And I don't know whether that is just being, me being lazy, or I was curious to start asking this question now, since we're getting more and more testimony of how we'll translate this experiences into something we can use later on when we're drawing maps and recall and recollect what we've been told.
So Commissioner Stetcher, if you remember, last time, we had indicated we are doing a catalog of all the written and oral comments. We're looking at some other software, such as Airtable, that does allow you to do some mapping with it. But I also think it's something we need to talk to ArcBridge, because I think they are the ones who can probably best translate the cluster of comments to show you where it would translate in terms of the map. So today, you heard a lot of comments about East LA, city terrace areas, vis a vis Monterey Park and Commerce and that. So I think ArcBridge could be an important variable in this whole conversation as we go forward more in August. Commissioner Kenny?
Along those lines, is there a library of the written comments that we've received? Because, for instance, one of the gentlemen today said that they had sent in a letter. Where is that letter? And how can we access that? And should those written comments be posted on our website?
So Commissioner Kenny, every single one of the written comments are posted on our website. And right now, they're being posted based on the zone meeting that they pertain to, so that you'll have them clustered in a more logical way. I use the term catalog. I could have used the term library. What we're doing is creating an Excel spreadsheet that will give you some key factors that you can sort against in terms of the public comments. One of the comments, one of the columns tells you, was it a public comment, a written, a COI form, a written letter? So you'll know the format, and there'll be a reference number so you can go and read the details. That will not be completed till we do all 10, or we end up doing 12 public hearings. It's a work in progress.
So if I go back to one of the earlier Community of Interest Hearing meetings, those comments are now appearing under that area?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Ty, your clerk, who's doing a lot of this cataloging on the public comments, if you want to elaborate further, Ty.
Definitely. So on the Meetings page, a page on the website, typically, as what we've been doing for all meetings and public hearings, I post any submitted written public comments around 5:30 PM the day prior to the scheduled meeting or public hearing. That deadline is already set and described on the website. And then after each meeting, I go back to see any additional submitted comments that missed the deadline, and then I add them after the actual meeting or public hearing.
If you get one a month later, it gets posted back on that, under that meeting for that earlier region?
So eventually it does. And so that's something that will be worked into by the time all 10 hearings have been done. Just because in some cases, for example, today, we had a comment about the Santa Clarita area, but that public hearing was about a month ago. And so if they were to submit it and they identify that this, that they would like it submitted to the Zone A public hearing, then eventually it will be marked into that meeting by the end of the 10 public hearings.
And Ty actually.
We have no, we have no way of knowing if there's a new comment that came in that gets posted somewhere.
We can try to systematize it. Again, it really does depend when folks submit those comments. The one thing that I can guarantee that it will be posted by zone with it, by the time that the public hearings, the 10 public hearings are done. So as long as they meet the deadline that has been set on the website, it will be available for the commissioners. And that deadline, we can change. It's up to the commissioners. Commissioner Stetcher, you have your hand up?
And Ty, they're tagged geographically, right? So we can always go in and look for a particular area and get all the things that are relevant to that area, regardless of when they were submitted, right?
Eventually, when the library or catalog, as Gila had described, is completed, all of the comments will be in one file where will be Excel so that everyone will be able to access and sort accordingly. Again, as long as members of the public, they meet that 5:00 PM deadline that has been set and described on the website, commissioners will be able to access it on the website, as mentioned before. I am updating those different documents if I receive the comments in a timely manner. But by the end of the 10 public hearings, they will also be organized by those public hearing zones as well. Co-Chair Maeda?
I want to make sure Commissioner Kenny and all the other commissioners understand that every time there's a public comment that is submitted, a written letter or public comment, it is associated with a particular meeting, that meeting that's coming up. If it's prior to 5:00, prior to the meeting, it's part of that, that night's or that day's meeting attachments, if you will. So you can go find the meeting and find all the comments. There's no surprise. There's never a comment that comes in that, that floats out there without us being aware of it. And then Ty is, excuse me, and then Ty is saying he then will associate a particular comment, if it relates to a particular zone, he will then associate it with that zone at some later point. So you can go to that particular hearing and see all the comments, whatever, whenever they came in that relates to that particular zone.
Just to be clear, regarding the gentleman from Santa Clarita, I have not seen the letter that he said he sent in to the commission. So I guess we did not receive it before the meeting today.
If, if, if they, if they had submitted it, and if they had submitted it, I would usually ask them which public hearing they would like the comment to be posted for. If they said for Zone A, as long as they met that timeline, then it would be posted for Zone A. For the individual who submitted a comment today, I would need to go back to see when they had submitted that, that comment.
I think the other thing, I can only liken this to a rolling admission process for a college or a university. We receive public comments. Ty calls and asks, or emails and confirms, do you want this associated with your zone? Or is it a more at-large kind of a comment? Because at-large would be posted on the nearest date of our next meeting. The 5:00 deadline is a standard practice of the day prior for commissions in LA County. In the case of today, because we started at 2:00, we actually made it 2:00 the day prior, so that no one would feel they were cut off. The catalog or library is a very important thing for your point, Commissioner Kenny. Because when you get through these hearings, we want to be able to give you a compendium so you can do a sort, and you'll know here are all the letters, the comments, or whatever on this zip code, this geographic area, et cetera. But it is very much like a rolling admission where these keep coming in. Our goal is, and quest is to make sure we capture every oral comment, telephone call, email, written correspondence and all of that. But you'll need that bundled eventually, so you'll have it in one way that you can look at it. And to, you know, the points raised by Commissioner Stetcher and, and others, you know, if there would be a way then to attach it to a GIS, you know, Airtable or something like that, that could be a very helpful as well. Again, this is a work in progress, hasn't been done before, and we're working on it.
I do also want to mention, in some of these cases, folks are submitting on behalf of an agency or organization. And so the name can be different, also the submitting name. And so that's something to also consider in terms of any discrepancies. Also, there might be some discrepancies depending on how folks submit to the Communities of Interest Form. For example, they could submit for, let's say, for, for example, Santa Clarita, but indicate Zone F. So then it would be associated with Zone F technically, because that's what they indicate as the zone.
I know, and I've been doing some of the cataloging and checking the zip codes. We've made some of those corrections as well. The, you know, for example, today, the letter probably will come from the city council, the city of Santa Clarita. So it'd be cataloged under that category. But again, this is just taking time. You know, because I also, going back to December 14th forward, because we received some earlier letters as well. We want to give you as complete of a packet when you get through this as possible. Any other questions? I will turn it back to the co-chairs. We can see if there are any other members of the public who want to speak. Otherwise, my exact report is done.
Gila, I have a question before we move on. Right now, we're doing hearings for public comments on Communities of Interest. Is there end date for people being able to make comments? Or at what point is there a cutoff or how does that work?
Well, it's like rolling admissions. I think you all can receive comments from the community all the way up to your final maps in December 15. And this is one of the things, when we complete the public hearings, this first round, and individuals start drawing maps and submitting them to you, they won't be called public hearings at that stage, but they are going to be forms of community of interest input. They may fill out the form that they're using now. They may draw a hand-drawn map, or they may use the county software. But you're going to continue in September and October, receiving input about where people feel the line should be drawn. Once you develop your options, and we're looking at probably the third or fourth week of October, they have to be posted for seven days. And then you have to have a minimum of two more public hearings that would be spaced 30 days apart. So that would bring us really to around November 1st through Thanksgiving. And during that period, you can choose to have more public hearings than two. But you have that window of 30 days where the public needs to be able to provide more input on your options. Then the first two weeks in December, you need to decide what your final recommended map will be. Does that help to explain? So there are two rounds of public hearings. These that we saw in the summer to get input, you listen. The ones in, in November are going to be much more pointed in terms of the options you're considering and suggested adjustments to those. It's a tight timeline. Okay. Can I turn it over to the co-chairs now?
Ty, as our, maybe you can remind the, anybody who is still participating, still attending of their opportunity to provide a community of interest input before we close out.
Yeah, of course. So again, as a reminder for members of the public who are interested in making a public comment, please fill out the Communities of Interest Form, and you'll be able to find the link to the Communities of Interest Form in the chat on the form itself. At the end of the questionnaire, it will ask if you would like to make a live comment. If you mark yes, we will be able to see it on our end. And once, you will have one opportunity to speak for three minutes. And yeah, perhaps we can give a moment for any folks who are just joining us.
So we will have been open for public comment for nearly two hours and have, I think, given the folks ample opportunity to participate. Is there anybody in the public within the sound of my voice who still wants to make a public comment? Please indicate that in the next minute and through the form, the Q and A, or raise your virtual hand if you're just on the, on the phone. Ty, I assume that no one has indicated that they still wish to make a public comment?
We currently have no additional entries in the Communities of Interest Form, and we currently have no hands or new entries in the Q and A.
Okay. Okay, then let's close the public hearing, and unless there's other business, let's adjourn the meeting as well. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
All right, bye, everybody.
Thank you.